Good. Did you say all set?
Yeah.
All right. Want to welcome everybody to our Hyde Park City Council meeting for October 22nd. We appreciate everyone coming to. Meet with the council. The first item of business is, is council member Tiffany Atkinson will lead us in a pledge and prayer, and then we'll move on from there.
Start with a prayer. Our dear heavenly father, we're grateful that we are able to meet this night as citizens of Hyde Park City. We're grateful for our community and for the good people that live here and for the attitude of service that prevails in our community. We're grateful for the ability to govern ourselves and to work together to create a community that is enjoyable for all. We pray that this night that as we discuss the meetings and the agenda items that we will have ears to listen and minds that are open to discussion on how to resolve issues and to create decisions that are in the best interest of our community, that we might be mindful and forward thinking in our decisions. We're grateful for the freedom we have and for the blessings we enjoy in this beautiful community, and we pray for these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Tiffany. And that's correct. It's prayer and pledge. The next item of business is to review and accept the meeting minutes from October 8th and 16th. I appreciate Gerald taking over for October 8th, but let's take that one. Let's do each of these separately. October 8th. Does anybody have any comments or additions?
Mayor, just very quickly, our city recorder is absent tonight, so please ensure for yourself and those who are here in the community, when we're addressing official business of the meeting, please talk very well into the microphone so we can catch up for the recording. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments on October 8th, city council meeting minutes? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 8th.
How much should we approve the minutes as written?
Got a motion from Tiffany, a second by, from Stephanie. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay. Motion carries five zero. October 16th was a quick, short, special meeting. There's a short agenda, but we'd be looking to approve those meeting minutes. If anyone has any questions or make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 16th, 2025.
Got a motion from Gerald to approve the meeting minutes, October 16th, 25. This is your second.
I'll second it.
Got a second from Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay. Motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. If the council would allow, we have a item seven B and seven eight. If you would give me some liberty to be able to we'll follow in this order, but then I, after we discuss seven, eight, I would like you to go back to seven B on the if there's any action that you want to do. So I, th- those are tied together, but it's broken up because of, of discussion, act- action items and discussions.
I'm confused. You said seven A and B.
No, seven, seven B, where we're going to be talking about a person's splitting a subdivision, but eight A.
Okay.
Is very much tied to what happens in seven B.
Okay. I thought you'd said seven A. I just.
Okay, I might have.
Okay. Yeah.
So we'll follow the agenda, but I want to be able to go back on one so we can have some clarity when we go back to it. Other than that, it's not a change to the agenda. I just want to be able to have you have some more information and then go back to that one potential minor subdivision.
I've got a motion to accept the agenda.
I've got a motion from Kirk to accept, accept the agenda.
Second it.
And a second from Stephanie.
Quick clarification, mayor, was that the agenda as amended or as it stands?
Not gonna, not gonna amend it, but I just wanted them to know that I'm gonna, I'll probably leave that one discussion of seven B open, go to eight A and then go back to seven B.
Okay.
So with liberties.
With a little latitude there. Got a motion from Kirk and a second from Stephanie. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay. Motion carried five zero. The next item is to receive resident input to the council and to myself. Let's have you, if you would come to the microphone, limited to three minutes. It's time for you to provide us some input on things that may be concerned. The council may not necessarily be responding at that time. Some things we'll have to take back and, and maybe there isn't a simple, easy solution now. We got to figure things out and, but we want to receive that input. So if you'd come to the microphone, we all received a couple of handouts.
Yes, those are my hands.
So.
And I will try to keep my comments to three minutes. In fact, I'm putting my timer on.
It's okay. We got a big clock with a gong.
There's a trap door just.
So thank you for your time. I appreciate being here and, and commenting. As I walk up and down Center Street, I, I meet my neighbors and some of the issues with the new construction have arisen, comment issues. I put together the notes you all have and I'm just gonna read through those. I'm sure these aren't all the concerns, but I, there are some interested other neighbors here that they may want to comment at the line, but I'll just read through them. This is concerns regarding Center Street construction. I have several concerns regarding the recent construction along Center Street. The newly installed curb and gutter appear to be out of compliance with Hyde Park City code. Page two of your handout, I believe is the code, and if that's not the code, you can enlighten me on that, but I think that is code for Hyde Park City. If there's a new, a new building going, a new home going in, that's what the council required. That's what the building code requires. I think that's what it is, but if I'm wrong, you can correct me. The slope from the sidewalk to the curb and gutter are significantly steeper than 2%. The 2% requirement based on my measurements. And I'm not that great at math, but I did the best I could. Slopes range between 10 and 18%, which is much too steep for vehicles to approach safely without risking damage. Many of us have vehicles with this much clearance. I measured my vehicle and it's this much. So as you approach off the road and go up that incline that is between 10 and 18%, there's going to be problems. This issue appears to be consistent across the driveways, all driveways along Center Street where new construction has occurred. In general, the curb does not align with the sidewalk. In some areas, it's too high. In some, it's much too low, but for the most part, it's much too low. I also have concerns with the new water pipe that's been installed within an inch of the existing line, which could be problematic. One of my neighbors has already experienced a crushed sewer line, which I'm sure you're familiar with. This has resulted in sewage backup and flooding in their basement. I know my neighbor's pretty frustrated. My wife and I are frustrated because we've suffered some damages at our home and it's cost us $4,000 to make those repairs. I'm wondering how these problems will be addressed before inclement weather prevents further work. If construction is not completed according to Hyde Park City code, what contingency plan is in place for affected residents along Center Street? What is the plan for addressing any unforeseen consequences that might, that might arise in the future? When will the mailboxes be installed? Three minutes is up. And who is responsible for the park strip material or landscape will be, will it be filled up? And in the end, what happened and how will it be fixed? Thank you for allowing me to roll over.
Thanks, Blaine. Is there any other comments that we'd like? Cody, you're one, you, I can see you nipping at it.
I'm frustrated because I can.
This is, this is Cody Johnson.
Oh, Cody Johnson. I came down for the sidewalk meeting last year and asked the question, do we know that the grade's correct? And I was assured that they had had it engineered and that the curb would match up with the grade of the sidewalk, but obviously.
We had an engineer here at the time too, when we had that discussion.
Two engineers, both from Sunrise.
Yes.
And so I, I know complications, but I also noticed the curb is poured up over the, the bridge, which I've never seen that before ever. Why would you put curbing over the bridge?
Down here?
No, right up.
Right here.
Yeah, the curb's poured up over top of the bridge, which doesn't even make sense. If you're draining into the canal, which used to be the canal, there should be a port. So as stewards of the monies of cash value and the monies that were given for the grand, I, I just think it maybe we jumped the gun doing one before the other. And I asked that specific question. Why don't we wait to do the sidewalk until you get the curb and gutter? Not assured that it would be matched up. So that's my concern is that we wasted all this money. There's getting more money wasted trying to remedy the situation that's there. Plus the times, I mean, we were told it'd be finished before the end of July. And now we're in October. And then they haven't even, they're not even close. My sister-in-law Betty had been 10 days. Her car in the driveway, no way to get across the driveway to get out. She was told it'd be done tomorrow. He said, I'll be okay for seven days. But I mean, they're gonna have to come and build a bridge because she can't go anywhere in the case of emergency. And I've got handicap neighbors that have the same problem. So that's my concern.
Thanks, Cody. Anyone else? Brad?
Yeah, Brad Atkinson. I'm the neighbor that got the sewer thing in the back in their basement. I, I agree with Blaine that the concern is with the curb and gutter. That why, how can it be that when this, when Moses's company come in there first and did the sidewalk and assured me that this is to the top of the grade, top of the crown of the road, to the, his measurement. That's exactly what he said it had to be, from the crown of the road to the sidewalk. And then when the gutter guys come back, they, they take supposedly take the same measurement. How can it be so far off? I mean, you follow that sidewalk and there's, there's a foot difference all the way to sidewalk, up and down all during that sidewalk. And Jefferson's house, for example, they got to tear up all the sidewalk there. There's no, there's no question they got to do that because you can't even see the sidewalk from the road. They've curved so high. So I don't know who engineered this process with this project, but obviously somebody screwed up. The second concern I've got is because of sewer. When they replaced my sewer line, I took all these videos and pictures of where that blue line with the new water line sits with in relation to my sewer line. And there's less than a half inch gap between that black blue line to my sewer line. Less, they had to get, get a shovel with a crowbar and push all the sand between the two of them to give, even to replace the sewer line. And that's with an empty sewer line, an empty blue line. With that blue line, your new water line's filled with pressure on it and all this compaction is going on now. I just foresee a lot of problems coming down the road. It's going to be everybody else's sewer lines with the same kind of problems, with all the compaction and things that is going to have to happen in order to get this project finished. So I don't say a lot of things about if and when, but I don't think this is going to be, if it happens, I think it's going to be when it happens. Because of the clearance that I saw in two different neighbors' place with that blue line to this, to their sewer line. So somebody ought to reconsider and look and see what they can do about the curb and gutter and also with the sewer lines because there's got to be a certain amount of slope on the sewer lines to the main line and everybody has that same distance. And the houses are the same distance apart about, close to the, from the crown of the road to the houses. So I know the sewer lines and most of those houses are exactly the same as far as pipe wise to that main line, which is on the south side of Center Street. So in my, that's my biggest concern is the sewer. And the second thing is, yes, we have a problem with the the set with the sidewalk versus the curb and gutter.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Maureen?
Maureen Hearn's. I just want to, first of all, support my, my neighbors that have commented on things tonight. It certainly has impacted all of us on Center Street for a long time. The last item on the handout that you received was about the parking strip. And in most areas along Center Street, 95% of it, that parking strip is about 12 inches. On the corner of Second East and Center Street, it's about eight feet there because of the way the sidewalk was laid and the way the curb and gutter was. And I'm curious as to what will happen with that old drain that's still there, if that will be taken out and removed. There's a drainage pipe that still runs underneath Second East there on that corner. And just, just concerned a little bit about the stability of that and how that's going to be addressed. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. So thank you for your time. And I'm just wondering if it's possible that those of us that live on Center Street might receive a little bit more timely communication and updates for things that are happening and when to anticipate them. That's, we've been kind of lost a lot of the time during the summer because we were told certain things and then it didn't happen. And we hear it from so many sources. So if it could come from you, from the council, then that could be the word. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
And Dallas Giles, I'm one of those whose approach is going to be too steep. And I drive a Honda Civic, which sits really low to the ground and I'm worried about damaging my car trying to get into the sink. And I'm sure that Steve Corbett would never get in to my driveway when he comes to visit. I'll believe. So that, that's really my main concern, that I have an approach that I can get in and out of without worry. Thank you.
Thank you, Dallas. Any other comment? Not, we'll close it and I just, oh, I was gonna say, I was just gonna say, and it's good to see you here. I haven't seen her forever.
Different problem. We're waiting to make sure you got all of them on that one.
Okay.
So, okay, I'm Janice Roland and my husband and I are here talking about the street that I moved to a year ago on 450 North and Seventh East.
I didn't know you moved.
Yes. So anyway, this is very dangerous. I don't dare back out of my driveway because the way the hill is, you know, goes up, you can't see who's coming and they're coming down that hill very fast. There's no stops. It's the only east-west intersection that goes all the way down without any stop signs and so.
Which, which?
It's the part that's over.
How far east?
Seventh East, 450 North, Seventh East. So it's the last street over. You go up, you know where Snows live.
Are you on the?
Above the canal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the other side of the canal, on the east side?
Right.
Okay.
So they come barreling down there and from our driveway, you can't see two seconds above. I start walking across with the dog and I've almost gotten hit a couple of times because all of a sudden the cars are there. They're coming so fast and they don't see you. And snows across the street. They, they've almost been hit many times. They have to somehow switch around and come out forward. They can't even back out onto it. My husband had a measuring device to measure the speeds and he, he met the median speed was 33.5. 90, 93%, this is on the sheet there. 93% we're reading in excess of the posted 25. The school buses just tear down there. I do yoga and I can see them coming down there every morning. They come down, you know, all the way from the top, there's no stops and they're so heavy. They are just barreling down there. And we talked to the neighbors, 13, 13 neighbors who were on that street. We, nine of them responded with, none of them, they all said things like insane speed, 100% on board. Finally, they said that, a lot of them said that they have called and talked. And four didn't respond, but no one was opposed to it. All of those neighbors are struggling getting out of their driveway. They are at least lower than us, so they have, the people coming down can at least see them. But where, where we are, right at the crest of the hill, they can't see us. They're coming down and they'll swerve around us all the time. And I try and stay over here and tell, then I just gun it because I'm right, someone's going to head into me. Let's see what else. If I got another minute here. We're thinking that also so many people cross the canal, cross the street there because they're walking along the canal. They cross the street there. And I, I do that too with the dog. And that's another place you, that's where they almost get hit too, because that you can't see them until you're right in front of them. So my husband's gonna say a little bit more, but thank you.
Thank you. It was good to see you, Jen.
Do you handle those out, Kirk? Well, this is a nasty intersection with hidden, hidden driveways on it on the westbound side. Coming up, it's not as bad, but that was still 60% of the people were speeding. I think the median speed on that was 27 miles an hour. Top speeds that I measured just in two days, about two hours each day, 46 miles an hour in both directions. Grams at the bottom of the hill said when the, you had the cock cam up there, they saw 75 on it. I've seen some bicycles doing over 50 elsewhere doing. They went ripping by me like you can't believe. It, it's just out of control. It is literally the only east-west direction where the streets come on to 700 that is not blocked by a stop sign. And I think that attests to what the problem is. You might need more than that. You need crosswalk identifiers and probably assign hidden driveways because this is way out of control. I'd like to live at least another 10 years. And I'm probably not going to pull it off if I keep pulling out and going in that direction. If I go south, east or west, you're really taking your life into your hands, especially right before church starts on Sunday and right when school is about to start, everybody's heading down the hill and then they're coming back up. There are times that it's really bad. Most of the big trucks apparently are going that way because they can't get up this road. So they're plowing up and I'm positive that's why the number on the westbound or eastbound was lower. Because I had some of those trucks in there. To be fair, I took every reading that came across my camera when I did it. So I'm guessing that's probably closer to 35, but when you've got a road that you have 93% of the people exceeding the speed with a median of almost 35 miles an hour. And if you look, I gave you pictures of the school bus. That's got all our kitties on it and they shouldn't be doing anything near that. Now, I, you know, some places I'm agreeable, you could speed and that does happen. You can't go down that hill without riding your brakes and it's hard on a car. You've got to have a way to stop and restart. You might need to even consider what on 600 East. But we need something done. What's the next step?
Hey, thank you.
That's my question.
Well, and, and we'll get the council to that. We're, we don't field questions during, let people, if anybody else, I imagine you're going to be the last one to speak because y'all waited for the others. And then I'll have the council speak to the items.
That I'll have some feedback.
Oh, if the council would like to speak to, I know I have some items that I could speak to.
I think I could speak for the safety committee, Dave, that we will look into this and we will report back to you.
Well.
Yeah.
All right. Do it quick because it's a mess.
Yeah.
Well, I, I. Bad until they start putting the rest of the houses up there.
I know a phone call will be made tomorrow to the school district about the bus's speeding. Because.
They're the least of my problems. They only go by twice a day.
Oh yeah, but I enjoy anytime I can. I love that relationship.
All right, whatever.
Could you leave, write your number here and we can get?
Yeah, I didn't.
You can just put it by.
Four nine nine six nine three two four. Or you can have my neighbor hurt there.
Oh, okay. Would you make sure that that phone number does not show up in city meeting minutes?
I, I don't answer.
Well, we've already called you then.
We'll leave a message, we'll leave a message.
I know.
Saved my life.
Well, it's, hang on, we'll, we'll have, I'm going to close this and have some discussion with the council and perhaps you'll receive a little more input. So if there's any other comment, if not, we'll close the public input. Because this is one, just two people on this one. There was at one time, Marcus, we moved the stop signs, didn't we?
Oh, yeah.
And, and the stop signs were going east-west. We had, you would have thought we, we just kicked over the apple cart. We had a lot of residential pushback on that. And now this is why. This is, we, we had the stop sign at that point. Having a stop sign at the 700 and 450 North, going north really is we also got a stop sign going south too, but nobody comes from the south, right? Or from the north going very few, if they make a turn and they but perhaps this is, is one that in the interim that the safety committee takes this one up as well. We have some data from the city, from the police that they put along 700 and you're not even close to the top speed. And so we, that's why we formed a safety committee because we need to slow traffic up. So one thing that as a, as the committee, we need to have the document of the formation of the committee come before the city council to get that approved. And then in that same meeting, we can have the first recommendation of the four-way stop at 450 North and Fourth East be spoke about to the city council. That is also a challenge there. As many people know that. But the safety committee needs to take this one and take this forward because long-term, long-term at that intersection, we thought it would be a perfect place for a roundabout.
A little one.
Yeah, at the hat 700.
Yeah.
450.
I think really.
To slow people up.
Can I just comment on that because I drive down 450 and turn on Seventh East because I live just above there. Or I go down 450 and I will say, you don't see, you don't see cars backing out. I think that the stop is more important than a roundabout. I think it needs to be a stop because of the canal crossing, because of the way people are using the road and the angle of the drop. You can't see going down. You can't see cars coming up. Every day I drive down and I turn on Seventh East and I pray that no one's coming up and going to T-Bone me. It's not, it's really bad.
Perhaps it's a flat, rather than the roundabout, because that's a ton of money. The flashing lights, what we have on 700 and 160 by Phil Kelly's house, something that flashes that gets people's attention.
It's, it's a danger. It's becoming more dangerous road over the 15 years we've lived there as the, as it's grown and it's become busier. It's becoming very dangerous.
Yeah.
Is that from the one that shows you as you drive up to it?
It also records it and we have, we have a plethora of it will, well, it'll show. Well, it also gets, also gets, yeah, we realize that, but it'll measure it long before it flashes up there.
And, and it does it both directions too. So coming the other way, it'll, it reads, it reads both ways.
And the amount of traffic and the peak times and all of this stuff so that we can make better informed decisions. And the amount of traffic and the peak times and all of this stuff so that we can make better informed decisions. And and we, I know the safety committee has has said much about. And had a lot of input of. People speeding in town, but where we're finding other than four hu- fourth east. It's our people. It's us that's doing that speeding or or people above you or going up to there and and.
I I pulled my truck to the top of that road, looked at the neutral. I was doing forty-five miles an hour through that intersection when I had the brakes.
We got that on record, right? We could still issue a fight.
This is all being livestreamed to YouTube, so it's on the internet forever and just saying.
Yeah.
So you're riding your brakes all the way down. That's the only way you can stay under the street.
So council members Gerald and uh Dave are both on that safety committee and we have. Uh, five, six people on that, so the this is definitely one that is the next point of attack, but we. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, council concerning the the grades on the street, do you have any comments? There's there's much of which um. I'll say I had a very. Clear conversation. With sunrise this week. Would that accurately define it, Marcus, on this? Okay, and uh. I think there's more things to be discussed as far as the law that we need to discuss and get back to you. The city. We we struggled. Uh, as as you are the recipients of. Telling you, oh, this area is going to be closed because the contractor is going to work at this time and then it doesn't happen. We've told them we're no longer going to let people know because they don't follow through. We're just. Why would we, why would we tell you that something's gonna happen when I. I don't believe it. Why would I tell you that? I just, I believe it when I see it happening because we've struggled immensely with this contractor.
Well, that's why we put it back on them. The most recent work, they were supposed to go door to door and deliver letters to people and let them know personally what was going on. So I sure hope that happened.
Twenty-third, I'm gonna tell you and when I heard that day too. I laughed and I was looking for anybody willing to put a Benjamin on it. It's not going to be October twenty-third, so. That's tomorrow. It it's what is it's it better be, uh what did we hear this last week?
So, Marcus, there were a few changes that were made to the. The schedule and with some breaks that happened with some unmarked services as we heard about. There were a few additional days added to the contract. The now the date.
For asphalt.
The date for asphalt is Friday, this Friday. It was supposed to be tomorrow. We were at a construction meeting when they got a phone call from the paving company saying the paver broke down and they were fixing it as fast as they could. But they're moving the paving date to Friday.
I I I can't remember who the paper is. DWA contracted the asphalt out to somebody. There's only a few of them like LaGranne Johnson or Staker that does that, but uh.
I'm pretty sure that's who it is. So, yeah, the substantial completion should be reached next week. Will it be? We're not sure. And that's the discussion that we have to have with the contractor. The contract does allow for the city, if we can prove that there's damages that the city is sustaining. By going over schedule, there's an option that we have to seek some sort of compensation from the contractor for that. And so. We are looking at what that would mean for us right now.
Yeah, that's. Brad, you and I sat there and watched when they were fill backfilling out in front of your house and there was nobody there verifying compaction. Let the record reflect crappier. This is all. But it's true. It's tax dollars.
Mary is, is the issue, is the issue engineering or is the issue construction? Completion, like is it on the construction company or do we are we having engineering?
There's issues all around.
There's fault.
The this contractor. It's challenging. Internet lives forever. They're challenging and and as some have brought up, and I've brought it up earlier this week. That elevations that we said were there. Why are they where they're at? Now, park strips, there there was another question that was asked about. Who's of the park strip? Every everywhere around the city, the homeowner takes care of the park strip. I do that in front of my house. Is it the city right away? Some of those stakes that you saw in the yards. The the actual city right away extended far deeper into the yards than where. We put the sidewalk. Usually it's one, the sidewalk is placed at one foot off of the right away. We opted not to do that because I I walked with some people, some of the res- residents along there, Brad and Murray, where that would be. We didn't want to do that. We'd be having a completely different discussion or not necessarily discussion. It it extends far beyond that. That's not what we wanted to do. Not only that. It would be a significant cost. It would elevations would be way off. And what are we going to do with all of that? Surfed area of between the crown and where the curb or where the gutter and the sidewalk could have been. We want it to be the least impactful, yet knowing it is impactful. We wanted, we wanted to make the least painful way. Their timelines are. Haven't worked out well for us, but that day is fast approaching and. We're compiling. As Marcus said, if if there can be damages, you have to be able to quantify what those damages are. So we're looking to figure this out. They're supposed to put asphalt Friday. Mayor.
I'm. I'll bring anybody a Coke on Friday if it's down.
If if we have the asphalt done. Have we solved the slope problem?
No.
Yeah, that.
The some of the some of the problem on the sidewalk. We, we had safe routes to to school money for another place. And the state and we said that that other place wasn't going to happen. And the state said, can you put it somewhere? It would be difficult coming back. That was a grant from the state, which is still ends up being our tax dollars. And so that's when we came up with the plan of we need to get a grant for sidewalk. We need to do a grant for the well. For the a different grant for the water line and be able to have this all come together. Fortunately, we got all the grants not in the right orders and there was a sunset on this on the sidewalk money. That if we don't use it and get it put in. It goes back. That's why it went in when it did. And so. We knew that in front of. Across the canal. Yeah, Camille Jefferson, we knew that one was going to be a challenge. We knew that when that went in. Outside of that one. These are your frustrations as well as the frustrations I. I'm feeling it as well and have been in discussion with sunrise on how this can. How this can be improved. What can we do? So I'm. I recognized it earlier this week after I come back and. I didn't know that. I figured some would come down after I saw what I saw. I didn't know everybody come down, but that's good because it's. Well, tell them at our next city council, it's on a Sunday night and.
Mayor.
Uh, we. It's frustrating for me personally because I know y'all. And it's happening to, not only is happening with the city, I know y'all and and there are people that we have as friends where I mean. I've walked that sidewalk. I get it. I understand it. And so it's frustrating.
Mayor question, so has the elevation of the road that they are going to pave changed? That dramatically from what it was before because I presume the sidewalk gutter road all matched. Properly and now it's not, so.
I'm I'm.
Is that a engineering? Maybe not a.
I I know what the answer that I got on Tuesday, but I now I want to bring them out and visually see what we're seeing because. The elevations haven't changed. I mean, it we intentionally kept the crown of the road because we didn't want to have to rebuild a crown. We knew that there was gonna be a certain slope. And so based on that slope, based on the curb, we should know the elevations.
Right.
And that's where I'm.
Okay.
Challenged.
Okay.
So I think uh tomorrow's uh probably a phone call to sunrise and alright. Let's not talk about it. I I want you to see what we're seeing, so. Well, catastrophic, I mean, that's, we're talking about a curb and a gutter, catastrophes are massive, but. I guess it it and it's all on perception on who it's happening to, right? Now, I'll tell you from our perspective, nobody's been told not to talk. It's more along the lines of. Now that we see how it's all coming together, we don't know how come how come what we see is not what we. Perceived in the meeting last year when everybody come down here and what we were assured. So that's. We have the same questions. I don't, it's more along the lines, perhaps some of us don't know and. And what answers we're getting aren't really answers. Thank you.
No, it's it's a sewer's, it's a sewer service.
It's a ser.
No, it's a sewer service goes in going over to the house. It's not the door main. It's the service line to his home. It's not a main. They're they're in separate trenches. It it crossed over the top to get to the home. It's not.
Yep.
No.
It's close.
Right, the sewer services above.
Absolutely. Yeah, so. Let's get. Let's make a note and have this be a discussion item on our next city council meeting. This needs to come up and I don't think these people would like to wait till that long that far. If you've signed your name back here. If any one of you would put, I I know how to get a hold of Brad, but if we can come up with what's going on. And what we're being told, we certainly can try and articulate that and get it into an email. If you want us to send that to you, please do. I will. I'll make sure that it, I mean, I know most of y'all, but.
Is there a unofficial spokesman in your group you think would get it out to everyone?
Blaine. Okay, Blaine. You've you've been, you're the neighborhood watch commander. Well, if we can get it to you, you you can. I I don't want Cody showing up at my doorstep. I parked my truck too many times in his driveway for parades. But. Yeah, well. But we we also have frustrations and may not be the same frustrations as like what Brad's experienced, but. That frustration, I understand it and it's. As I talked to Brad earlier, it's frustrating me and we're gonna figure it out and it. The damage that Brad Brad shouldn't be the one have to wait for that. That should, if we have to fight with. The contractor, that shouldn't be Brad's fight. That's our fight. So. That's why we took care of part of it and we should have done it differently now that Brad brought up how it's how they're coming back to him, but uh. We'll get information. We don't meet again till I think November twelve, something like that. And I don't want y'all to wait that long, so we'll get something when we can get some information. I'll feed it on to Blaine and. If you disseminate, we'd appreciate it, Blaine. Alright, thank you. And the drain, the drain is gonna be there. There's, it's supposed to be there to go underneath the road. Uh, at the you the drain at your house? That goes over to the the west side of the road? That one? Maureen? The new one's supposed to connect to the pipe. That should be removed, shouldn't it, Marcus? That's gonna be in the asphalt out in the road.
I do not remember if that was shown to be removed or not in the plans. I would assume it was should be removed, but I don't know how that was shown in the plans.
Yeah, hopefully the theory is there's not gonna be that much water getting to there because it's.
We'll include that in some information, so. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we'll get some more information on that one and put that in there as well if Blaine, if you make sure Maureen gets on that dissemination as well. Alright, well, thank you everyone for this is how it's supposed to work. Come in and voice issues and let the council. Hear them. They may not have all the answers. That's, we typically don't. But we know where to go to get the answers and we and you expect us to have those answers, so we'll do that. I'm hoping there's asphalt down there long before there's snow.
I think they're worried about the slope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I need to come up and walk some more. I I looked at it from down there because I'm one of the few people that obey the road closed signs. I didn't actually drive down it. I'm gonna. Blaine, you don't do anything anymore, right? You retired? Oh, you're still for it? You're consulting? Well, I'm gonna come and walk up that way. Uh, tomorrow, walk along there and take some pictures because I wanna share. I know in my experience, every time I go anywhere, I see infrastructure have bad things, so. We'll, we'll get some. Try and get as many answers as we can because I think. You guys deserve it, so I don't have them right now. I know that. Oh, yeah. You'll be worried about your homeowner's insurance. All right, well, thank you. We're gonna move to. The next item on. Mayor and staff report. Marcus, what have you got to report?
I don't necessarily have any specifics I would like to highlight for the council today, but if there are any questions about any items on the staff report, I will take them from you. Any questions regarding any items of the staff report?
Yeah, I have some questions on, um, under your road section. By the way, thank you for doing this. This is so helpful, Marcus, to have these notes.
And I got it to you a day before the council meeting instead of an hour before this time. We're approving.
You, you're on it, you're on it. No, there's, there's a lot of good stuff, um, and really it has to do with the. The signage and, um, and I look at all those and yeah, those are all. Good things to do and my question. My question would be, you know, before I could, I certainly think, you know, school zone. Things are priorities, uh, to really make a decision, I guess I'd want to know. The cost for each of those signs, you know, when we start looking at the radar signs in three or four places and. And, you know, flashing crosswalk signs, uh, just, just to know, I mean, certainly some of those are more important than others and I'd be happy.
I can give you ballpark prices. I've got ballpark numbers. So rate flashing radar sign, if you buy. A bulk order, they can come in about three to four thousand apiece. Um, flashing crossing signs or stop signs, you're looking at about five thousand apiece. The crossing ones come in a pair, so it's ten thousand per pair. And we have to do a solar because if you do an electric, we have to get, the electric is cheaper. But then we have to call Rocky Mountain Power and they come out and do a service and they charge us for those electrical services. Which ends up being more expensive than just doing the solar array. So we prefer the solar. Um, and then your standard street signs, we can get those from Sign Pro. If we do a bulk order, depending on how many it is, anywhere from like sixty to eighty dollars a sign, up to. A one or two hundred dollars per sign, just depending on how many and how unique they are. But those are relatively inexpensive, all things considered, your, your standard road signs.
And though we've talked about some of these on the safety committee, um, and just. Needing to know what the budget is, I mean, I'm happy if, you know.
Right.
Work with Gerald on that and, and just come up with some final recommendations.
And we have our, um, road fund that we plan for every year. Typically, we try to save as much of that money as possible for large projects such as road replacements. We have one right near your home we need to deal with. Um, there, you know, chip seals, other things like that, but a chunk of that money last year, we did end up putting towards a large sign. Uh, replacement citywide. So if that's something the council wants to work on, we can shift some of that money there. There's also some small set asides that we budgeted for, for what we're calling the pet projects or, you know, the things that come up that we, the council just wants addressed right now. So there's money built into the budget for these things, but we as a staff had just had so many requests that I wanted to turn it over to you that. Those who represent the people to tell us what you would like to do with all the requests. So, you know, it doesn't have to be decided right now. We just need some direction before we start ordering signs for everybody.
I think I know what you're asking for, you know, if, if you're, if you have a, here's the gross amount of dollars. Here's our shopping list. What can we get? At what cost? So.
And certainly some of those are more important from a safety standard. I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, school zone kinds of things and. Certainly is important, but yeah, that's really what, what we need is.
Okay.
Okay.
We can get that.
What's wrong with the flashing signs currently at Cedar Ridge?
We have had reports from the crossing guards that they've had issues with them and their flashing. They've asked the city a couple of times now for just a new sign. Because the one is getting very old and they say that it doesn't work very well. I personally have never seen it not working well during school hours, so.
Never seen it.
Nice thing about those, we have power there already, so.
Right, and our public works has been down there to look at them. They don't necessarily see any problem, but everybody agrees they're getting old, so it's. It was a request from the crossing guards and just something to consider.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's the only question I had.
Any other questions for Marcus? I, I'd say from my perspective, um, I've got a meeting set up. Uh, for us. Wednesday coming tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow the school district is coming, um, to meet with. The city staff, the mayor, I think there was two council members on the invite. Who was it? Dave and Tiffany?
Dave and Tiffany.
Um, the school district's coming to officially present their plan for the middle school, um, or not the middle school, sorry, the elementary school. Um, because we haven't seen the final version yet, even though they're halfway done building the outside of it. But, you know, that's neither here nor there.
I specifically told them that we. Don't necessarily want to have a death by PDF. We want to see the building plan. And we want to see their traffic plan.
Right, and one concern that we have is with this new school district coming in, of course, we want to know where the new bus stops will be. It's information we don't necessarily have. How it's going to change the existing bus stops, if it will at all. There are several questions that we have as a staff that we're hoping to get some answers from the school district. Um, and additionally, we've asked about getting some better signage installed, you know, the flashing signs, the school zone signs. The, the, uh, crosswalk flashing signs. The school district's initial response to us has been, well, that's not our property near the city. You can do what you would like to. I'm not really happy with that response. Uh, I would like to encourage the city council to discuss with the school district more productive ways of thinking.
You can tell me offline, council, if you didn't like it, but I told them that although they get all of their approvals through the state. Nothing comes, building inspection, nothing comes to the city. The only things that the city does. Control. Is when and if they hook up to our water and sewer and they're not doing that until. They make, make it right with the city, so. It's, you know, they, they can't make their problem my problem. I'm not gonna do it. I'm having it, so. That's why I said a call would definitely be made tomorrow because I. It's okay, I'm good with that. And, and if council, if you're not in agreement, tell me offline. You don't have to. I just don't think that Hyde Park City should be bearing the burdens of something that they're creating. So. Or the residents of our city. So, um, the. Other thing is, um. Uh, we've, we've made our final. Uh, appeal last. Was it Monday night for, for our cog grant? Yeah, a grant is. Being recommended to go forward to be approved through cog. Uh, one phase. And, uh, we'll have more to. The Cache County Council won't vote on it until they have to approve all the recommendations. I've never heard them. Not approve a recommendation in all my time with city government. Uh, with that said, I still don't want to announce what it is and everything, so they, they should be meeting in November. And, uh, we'll announce that. As, as time permits on that one. That one has gone forward. Other than that, I've.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, dude, have some.
You're saying that, uh, you would like to discuss the core.
Yes.
City and either have a, uh. The council or a committee?
Right, and that ended up on our agenda for tonight, just because we felt like it needed additional time to discuss. Um, mostly because I didn't really get a response with the last staff report, so I thought we'd put it on the agenda and have a discussion about it tonight. But yeah, part of that discussion is probably gonna end up being a request for some sort of committee or study group outside of our public meeting.
Seven B, eight A discussion cumulative. Um, one, one last thing, Tiffany, you, you were able to sit in on. Meeting we had this week, if you can give us a quick, um, overview of. What's going on and this, this is in regards to a, a developer and a park, but, uh. Council, you're all very aware of. The, a firm line we're taking with the developer, but the, the potential of a park has been moved to. Uh, their collaboration and us with USU, so Tiffany.
So, yeah, USU, um, landscaping, student, landscape architecture students. Are, they're all juniors. They came and presented some ideas or concepts for the park that could be down in that development. Um, I have, I have their, um. Presentations, if anybody wants to look at them. They're really creative, really good ideas, um, that we could carry throughout the city in the future if we decided. We want to implement some of them. Um, they're very forward-thinking, uh, highly focused on nature and activity and learning and trails. And, um, community. Activities, really good presentation from the students and then in next month we'll be meeting at their studio and I think. Uh, can anybody go? Can we all come? Because it's open to the citizens of Hyde Park. They said to invite the citizens. But can we all meet there as city council members? I don't know.
So the way that the Open Public Meetings Act works is if. There's gonna be a discussion of city business at all, then there needs to be an open and noticed public meeting. If all the city council decides to go grocery shopping at Lee's on a Thursday night and you run into each other and you say hi and move on your merry way, that's not considered a violation. But where this is discussing potential city business, I would hesitate to invite all the council.
Let's, let's look into that because this developer has not been approved on anything for a development, so is it city business because they have zero.
I'll, I'll check with the city attorney, as long as it's just a presentation only, um. I'll see. I just don't want to violate anyone.
Oh, yeah.
I just think they have some great ideas and, um, at least look at the packets they left as a council, just to see what they're proposing and. And give feedback. And that if we, if we all can't be at that meeting, we can carry that feedback forward from the council as a whole. I think it would be helpful to them.
Yeah. So Tiffany's got the packets, I think Marcus does. I've got them in the office. Uh, you're more than welcome to them. All right, let's move on to.
Mayor, can I just say one thing, I, before I forget. I'm not available tomorrow, but on Friday at any time, if you have any meetings with Sunrise or the contractor on the road. Uh, I'd love to be there and ask a few questions, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Not tomorrow, you're available on Thursday?
On Friday.
On Friday, excuse me. Okay. Um, let's move on to.
Six B.
No, yeah, six B. Holly, um, Baird is, um. Feeling that she needs to step away from planning commission. She's got young, impressionable children at this time and she really. Um, she wants to stay involved in the, in the safety committee. Um, but she really feels like she needs to spend more time. With her children and that's understandable, having, um, the, the younger kids, so I. Did happen to have one lady that, I forgot, I gotta pull this up. Heather Taylor reached out to me at some months ago and. She asked me. She said that she wants to be involved in, in the city. She's. Empty nester and has time and she's done things before and. How do I go about getting involved in the city? And I told her, oh, man, it's quite a process and. She said, well, what is it? And I said, you have to have desire and ask me. And since you've already asked and you explained that, but I will pull up, she sent. Let me pull this up. She sent me an email with. Uh, some of her. Information about her. She couldn't be here tonight. She was. I'm not sure if any of you know who Heather Taylor is, uh, nice lady. Key qualifications, she's entrepreneurial leadership, uh, designs, owns and operated thriving salons in. For five years overseeing all aspects of business operations, marketing, finance, staff, development. And current owner of Pepper Clothing. Twenty-nine years of, of business and operation management, manage budgets, schedule clients, um. Relations, growth strategies. She's recruited, trained and worked as inspiration for other employees as they continue to move forward in their career. Partnered with architects and, architects and designers to design and build a functional, aesthetic, aesthetically appealing. Uh, business. Cultivating long-term client relationships. Honored as Lehigh when she lived down there, Lehigh Chamber Commerce Woman of the Year in two thousand seven. Uh, education, she's completed courses at Snow and BYU. We'll take it though. And focused areas that strengthen the, in business and interpersonal relation skills and I. I think the big thing is, is someone having the desire. And wanting to be involved. That's, that's key. You can have the most. You know, pedigreed person. But if they don't have the desire and not showing up and not being involved in it. That's. All that pedigree means nothing, but, and she's willing to get in and be involved in this and so. What I'd be looking for is some approving consent or not some, but a, an approving consent from the council. To have Heather Taylor serve on our planning commission. And that would be with motion, I believe, for approval and consent or, or. Or you, we can, we can do the.
We all say.
Do the Greeks and do thumbs up.
Yeah, I think you can just.
Looking for approval and consent.
Yeah.
Is there any non-approval?
I'm just, I'm good.
You're good, good. Tiffany, good. Gerald, Kurt?
I, I, my main thing is they have the best, the city's best interest in, in your conversation, if that's who she is, that's.
So my conversation is, has been with her is we need somebody that's. Although we take care of the immediately, immediate needs, we need to be planning for the future, how things are going. If something complies with code. It's hard to not approve it. And if, if we don't like it, change our code. That's, that's the real thing is we don't like how something is going. We need to change it, modify it, do something, change the code because if it complies. And you go against it, we're gonna, we're gonna. Come out on the short end of stick on that every time.
I think to the point that Dave makes all the time is, is our code and what's being approved supporting our master plan, right? And if that's not, we, we tweak it.
That's, and I've, I've sent her links for all of that and, um, we, we have. A younger planning commission, we have some with, uh. Experience, but I think the big thing is we have people that are desiring and wanting to. Be a part and be engaged in the community and that's, that's the important aspect, not coming into it with. I want to stop all greenhouses from ever being built or I think we should have a gated city. It's, they're coming into it. With an analytical, methodical process of thought. That's what I've got from her and she's wanting to learn it, so. She's been to a, a few of the planning commission meeting, meetings, just trying to learn and. Figure it out as, as they go. And one thing I'll say is I, I really like that we've got more women involved. In the planning commission and in city government. I think that's great. Probably wouldn't be as messed up as what we are. Uh, except for Tiffany and Stephanie. So Gerald, are, are you good then too? All right, so we have a proven consent. And I will notify her and she's got to complete the training before she can. They've got a meeting next week, right?
Uh, no, next week is.
Oh, yeah, next week.
Is the Spook Alley.
Uh, the next item. Marcus, do you want to take us? Marcus, do you want to take us through seven A to start with? I'm assuming that uh, the NIs are here.
Wait a minute, we skipped the
Waste management.
Waste management. I'm sorry. I apologize. Waste management you have in your inbox. Um, I gotta pull up my PDF here. There we go. It's time to when we negotiated the original contract with waste management, we built in some extensions that they could that we could negotiate and be granted. There's a couple of things. What I'm looking for is your approval for for me to sign for the city to enter into a continued um, agreement, contract with waste management. Some things, this is a draft. There's a few changes in here. One is it wouldn't be effective until December one because we have to have a a rate fee, uh, weight garbage collection fee uh, change in our fee structure because waste management is tied federally to the CPI with the federal government on on their
Pricing.
Trans their transportation of waste. And so the government, federal government ties them. And that's what the increase is on the CPI. That's that's a federally controlled number that goes into it. So it would be in here. It says October one, but I called and told them that we can't, we can't respond that fast. We have to have a public hearing for the fee structure. And then the agreement would take us to um, October of I can't remember. Was it October of?
Thirty three?
Thirty two, thirty three? Yeah.
Does that mean that waste services are going to go up in money? And how much?
On the on the fee structure, I've got um, I've asked Colette to figure out how much that is when it says the CPI is five point something percent. Five point four one percent, I think it was. Figure out what that is so we can have a complete clarity when we have that re rate fee uh, here, public hearing in November.
Okay.
So that, but yes. It it was five point four one, I think, percent.
I don't understand that. Does that apply to every, you know, does this apply only to waste management? And so every
Every waste hauler.
Every waste hauler. So even are the local ones?
Yep.
It's tied to the CPI.
They're right. They are required to have that CPI built into it.
Business to be in. My goodness, you're 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 there need a an increase every year, whether you need it or not. I mean, CPI is tied to a lot of things that don't have anything to do with waste management. But uh, if it applies to all, then I guess it doesn't make any difference. I mean, I was not here a couple of years ago when when we entered into this. And so I know that there's other cities, Smithfield, Richmond, Providence, there's some other places in Cache County that are not part of this consortium. Right? I guess the decision was made by the city council that this was the best approach rather than using a local agency.
Yes, if.
I mean, my neighbor today said he's tried to tell them at waste management a couple of times to let them know they didn't pick up his garbage. And he just gets the record and it says, we picked up your garbage at this date and time. You know, and he can never talk to anybody. It's nice to have a local that you could actually talk to maybe.
One of the things that has been brought up in our meetings with waste management is that uh, they they don't know Dave, they don't know Dave's address. They don't know any of that. Hyde Park City does the billing. So they 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 have a GIS map. So we're trying to figure out how, without increasing the costs, how they can figure this out and be more responsive because we're not the only city that typically somebody gets missed, they contact Hyde Park City and we end up calling them. But uh, we don't want to be in their business. We shouldn't be in their business. They should be able to call that number and get responsive uh, answers. And I've spoke with um, the Western Regional Operations Person for Waste Management and he's knows of the consortiums. It's not just us. Consortium, same concern. So that's going to be an ongoing. That one can't be solved immediately, but that's an ongoing challenge.
Because I just not knowing the reasons why they were picked over others, I'd maybe say, let's go back and look at what their performance has been in the last two years. And are they providing what we thought they were going to provide? Or do we need to say, and can we? I mean, are we tied to this consortium for ten years? Or can we just get out of it and say, well?
Yeah, but you better have a plan.
Well, I mean, you have to hire some other company to do it. I mean, is that even an option? So
And uh, we we thought we had other ideas and he shared with me a way to do it at cheaper and more efficient for the city to do things. So uh, they've they've been responsive. Of course, I'm call, I'm not calling their hotline either. So.
Okay.
All right. So.
They're a citizen though. I'm very, very impressed with them. Because the way they always deliver and they pick up garbage. But also I had my grandson out there washing it one day. He likes to wash trucks. The guy got out of the truck, bought over upset with a dump, little model dump truck. And uh, it was hard as I gave it to my grandson and
That's
He's all day. His time out makes.
That's cool.
I think he was scared about both. Uh, it was very impressive to me. I'm very.
That's good. And and leaving, leaving from, keep in mind, we were we weren't leaving the Logan. They they kicked us out. We got a divorce and we found out they owned everything. So uh, with that, uh, they they've been, they were a big enough company to come in and not be taken, not not have Logan rule over them. How's that? They've, you don't want to sell trucks, good trucks at a fair price. That's okay. We got trucks all across the country. We can bring in. That's okay. You sit on them. That could, that made it a lot more amenable. Plus, in the long term, we also I put into the contract that they need to be going to NG on some of the trucks.
Natural gas.
So emissions, yeah, knock down our emissions in this valley. We know how that gets in Cache County. So.
Okay.
Thank you. So with that, we'll be having a public hearing on
At the first council meeting in December.
Yeah, whatever day that was. I think it's the twelfth uh, in in November. And it would go in November and then go into effect in December. But we'll have a clear and concise agreement, but I'm looking for the council's approval to enter into this contract with waste management. All cities have to have that. Uh, do what I'm doing. That's why we told you can do it in October. We have to have public hearings. And I told them that same thing last year.
So do we make a motion now to enter before we even have a public hearing?
So.
I was wondering this.
So to enter into an agreement, but the agreement is what sets what the fee will be. And and then when when the fee is there, then we can have the fee, public hearing.
I think what the mayor asked for was the council to vote to give him the authority to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
Yes.
And I would I know that there's a potential amendment coming to that fee saying that it won't be enacted until December. So perhaps that's the motion is to give the mayor the ability to sign on behalf of the city once the fee's been adopted or something along those lines, because then at least we're not holding this hostage and waiting for that to happen.
But I'm I'm just confused, I guess, that we give the mayor approval to sign a contract and then we're going to have a public hearing in several weeks because of the raised fee. And if everybody says, well, we don't like it. I mean, oh, well, we've signed.
Fee isn't changing. It's a
So what happens in that case is the fee goes up regardless and the city just has to pay the difference.
If the fee is anything different than this contract, we're gonna, I'm gonna have discussion with them.
So the fee is going up regardless. The city has the choice to adopt a new fee schedule to pass that on to each of the residents, or the city can find money within our budget to compensate for the difference. Every other city within the Cache Waste Consortium plans on updating their rates to match that budget so that we're still having the fees that are charged to the residents match the rate the waste management is charging us.
Five percent of fifteen or twenty dollars for a single garbage can. It's not going to be a lot.
No, I think it's like
Per resident.
Or something like that.
But boy, that's a great deal across America because I see waste management everywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, good for them.
Okay, so yes, that that would be the if you're okay with it, I'd be looking for a motion to allow me to enter into a contract agreement uh, with the Waste Consortium on the extension for waste management.
I move that we uh, let our mayor sign the agreement with waste management for a five-year extension.
So I've got a motion.
I'll second it.
Does it calculate out to a five-year extension?
The contract?
Because if
The agreement.
Comes into effect twenty six and it goes through October of twenty of thirty.
Well, it's a five-year extension of the original contract.
Okay.
Which was, I think it was a four-year contract. So we're expanding that out.
Yeah. So we've got a motion by Stephanie and a second by Tiffany to allow me to enter into an agreement to sign, sign the agreement with the Waste Consortium with Waste Management. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed with nay? The next item that I've been trying to get to is to consider requests for land use uh, per land use code regarding a minor subdivision, the applicant from Todd and Kimberly Nye. Uh, this has come up before to the city, but it now is a better time. Marcus, you we have counsel, we have a lot of documentation, uh, PDFs in there for the NIs. Do you want to give us the
Yeah, I can give a brief
Reader's Digest version of what they're looking for and why they're looking for it. And it's
Yes, and the NIs are here. And I know they've prepared a little presentation as well. They would like to give to the council, but perhaps when I'm done, you'll give them some time. Um, the NIs approached the city. It's been a few years now looking to split their lot. At the time they approached the city, we didn't have the residential core zone. And so it was impossible with the restrictions of the zoning. With the introduction
They live in the residential core zone.
Correct. With the introduction of the core zone, it provided a way for them to subdivide their property. But then a different problem arose, which was in our subdivision code. Um, it says that every subdivision is subject to installing improvements. So that means you got curb, gutter sidewalks, additional asphalt. It it can be quite um, extensive. And so the discussion that we have had with the NIs is they feel like there are provisions in the code that would allow them to um, not have to put those in. And then this also speaks to the discussion we'll have later where the city staff feels like, and especially the core part of town, these requirements can be quite onerous. And we'd like to have discussion with the council about perhaps amending those requirements um, specifically for the core zone due to the existing infrastructure.
If you if you look at uh, in the core zone, there's a lot of hundred-foot right of ways. And that means if there's curb and gutter out in front of the Nye's house and not on or their lot and nothing on either side, where's the city going to put that water? We've always had grassy swells. Long ago, the city had pushed to get sidewalks installed on the north sides of streets in the core zone and on the east side of streets, I believe, in the core zone. West, with we wanted to be able to have where somebody could walk up that street at least and not be in the street on the west side and the north side of streets. This becomes challenging in people in the core zone. So now you know the crux of what they want. And we'd invite the NIs. If you want to have a presentation, you want to share that with us, we certainly will.
Can I just ask real quick? Um, the Planning Commission, have they seen any of this, that they had this conversation?
No, um, this originated with the city staff. We've had several discussions with the NIs as they've been through the application process for their subdivision. And we thought we probably should get the city council's opinion on if this is even an avenue you want to go down before we start spending the planning commission's time on researching this further.
Okay, thank you.
And I think they're in the whole Packet, there's a letter that they're requesting a. What was the term used?
Mayor, maybe you should let them.
Uh, I'm just, I'm just thinking of what what was the term? Variance?
No, not a variance. They're not requesting variance. They're, you should just let them.
All right. Fine, I was.
We met with Marcus and Mikel last week.
Have you got something that you're going to want to share on screens at all or?
No, everything they're going to present is in your packet for you to review.
Um, so as we were talking with them and, uh, we had been going through the code trying to, um, figure out which route to go. Um, in your code thirteen forty point zero two zero B. It states that any changes requested by the developer that do not conform to the ordinance can only be approved by city council. So then we asked Marcus, can we please come before city council? Because what we are asking does not conform with the current code. Um, and we want to, uh, what we're asking is that we are able to split our lot. And build to the current standards of the RC zone right now. Um, that are present.
Standards. There's, there's lots of code.
Trump may miss.
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
Sorry.
I've never been here, so I'm a little nervous. Not that you're intimidating, but I'm just.
Okay, we're gonna broadcast it on.
That's okay. Um, and so, um, the reason we are asking that is because, um, well, for your code. And I I want to just always refer to the code because that's what the standard is.
Absolutely.
Is in twelve ten point oh two oh, that is what you guys define as the purpose of a zoning ordinance. That's why we have zoning ordinances. And it says to, um, they're designed and enacted for the purpose of promoting the health, safety. Morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Hyde Park. And so the current code that Marcus referred to about having city or street improvements. Um, is actually not. Reaching this purpose that it's designed. It's, it's not helping our welfare. If we're not prospering, we're having to pay more, so much more. Um, as.
Convenient for us or the city for many reasons, which we'll get into in just a moment, but.
Yep, and we have a personal, um. Situation. Sorry, my Charlie, I'm about to cry.
I told her not to cry.
Don't care.
I'm gonna explain it. So. We, we have a big, we have one point zero seven acres, which is now able to be split seventy seventy, seven hundred and forty-nine foot frontage. Plus is to split that into two parcels. Well, our old house was one of the smallest in Hyde Park. Three-story. Our youngest son is disabled. And I threw my back out. We work daily. He cannot be on a two-story house. Um, anyway, long story short, we tore down our house so we can build a slab-on-grade and accessible house. For him, for us, with lift, whatever we need through the house, single level. And. I think that's why she's giving emotional because. That there's conflicting code, they're incongruent, and Marcus and Mikel, they both agree and said you guys are working on it. And we feel that. Still, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Running quickly. Um, we feel that. With the current, I'm not trying to say kid.
That the current code is not consistent with the RC zone that you have. All the standards. Hopefully in your packet is a map of the RC zone. The green line shows you where the curb and gutter is in the RC zone, which is just Center Street. And the city office. The X's are properties that could possibly subdivide sometime in the future based on the. Frontage. Um, requirements that you have. And so we're saying by requiring all of the RC zone to. Have curb and gutter when they build or when they split, it will make it. Um, fractured and it won't be pleasing to the eye. I mean, you'll go up the street now like the.
There is the cost of.
Mayor said, you know, there's only one, one street. And then what does that do with stormwater? It all rushes into the the neighbors. Um. There's lots of, there's lots of different things that, um, are in the code that. Specify, um. Why the RC zone doesn't do that. In fact, at your last meeting. Ago, it was on the audio recording. There weren't written minutes, so I don't know who was saying it, but, um. It was specified that the development standards, it's different stormwater format there. Um, there are different historic infrastructure pattern when it was created. And by introducing the infrastructure in the space that was not designed for that infrastructure would not be beneficial. Um, for that area. Um, in the RC zone code, which is in, um. Do you have a question?
Oh, no.
Which is in, um, twelve dot one thirty. It states that if there are no sidewalks, that, um, a sidewalk assessment will be applied. If there are no sidewalks, uh, to attach to on either side. Um, which is contrary to the minor subdivision code, which requires that we have to do all the street improvements. So we are, we were ready actually months ago with loan application. We are wait, someone's ready to buy our lot. Uh, sorry. Uh, this is the only thing that's holding us up.
So you guys tore your house down that you had there, right?
Yeah.
So you had no house there now.
Correct.
So you're ready to build a house.
Slab-on-grade.
And of course, part of that is selling the lot to help with the financing, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll be retaining the east portion of our lot, selling the west and building that slab-on-grade.
Oh, you haven't built a slab-on-grade yet.
We can't because this is, and we can't subdivide until we decide whether we have to do curb and gutter.
You can't stop until this is taking place.
Where where are you staying?
We are just renting the house, thankfully, across the street.
We're not, we're not looking for pity, but.
No, it's just. I just.
That are in similar situations without a disabled child.
That are trying to subdivide and stuff, but we're just, we're just trying to say that, you know, um, it's. We love Hyde Park. It's beautiful. The old part of town is beautiful. And as you look up and down the streets. I think it would look really an eyesore to me anyways to see one that just, you know, one here, one there. It's, it's not the community that I think we're trying to build and the. The view that we want to portray as Hyde Park, that, you know, it's planned out, it's, it's thought out and, um. But it's.
Speaking of thought out, aside from feelings and thoughts about it looks, because there are a lot of people who love the way Hyde, build part of Hyde Park feels, they don't need that. Point is, in the code it mentions, we follow the master. Uh, let's see, twelve dot one thirty dot zero two zero. B. Says. In the event that, in the event sidewalk is not required across the frontage for the city's master sidewalk. Slash trail plan. It talks about a payment of a sidewalk fee. And I looked at both the master sidewalks, the trail plan and the road plan. They don't charge. We see on the master road plan, it calls for local roads where we live in most of the RC zone, which are typically a fifty to sixty foot right of way. We have a ninety-nine foot right of way, which I heard you talking about budgets and maintaining roads. If we expand those intermittently. I mean, twenty-one possibly, one is gonna be ugly, stupid and. Hard to maintain and costs you more in your budgets. And I'm not implying on your words, Marcus, but I do understand budgets with what I do at work. Um, and then the trail plan, aside from the master road plan. It talks about having our street dedicated as a quiet street, which is sixty-six foot right of way with a sidewalk. And there's already a sidewalk on that. North side.
North side.
North side.
So it's just, it's incongruent. I I think if the city were trapped to try and rework the right of ways, according to the master trail slash road plan. It would take a very long time with both. You don't have the budgets. You have time, but we don't have time. Other people don't have time, but trying to, what the code says as, uh. We streamline it and. This first page, I have right there.
Sorry, we printed the codes because we don't have them memorized.
I'm sure you guys don't need to. Twelve dot one thirty dot ten states, the purpose and intent of that section is for residential cores to provide regulated areas for single-family residential uses. And for continued improvement of underdeveloped or undeveloped lots in the historic core of the city. And again, we go, we go back to the purpose of this development to. I don't know, help. Anyway, there's lots, lots of stuff, but we just find it very. Because of that, we're, we're hoping that you allow us to move forward without all that stuff that. Said it. Was it Sunrise, the engineer about the connecting?
I don't know.
New infrastructure to old infrastructure. It just doesn't jive. And listening to the comments before about slopes and water drainage downstream, it. It just sounds messy. So.
And we just, um, I know from the last meeting anyways, and I'm sure most cities are trying to fulfill Governor Thompson's. Uh, mandate for, um. You know, affordable housing and whatnot. And in there, he states that, um. The stipulations and requirements for cities to adopt those, uh, strategies is to limit, um, allowing ADUs and limiting city rules so that. Uh, that increase costs. And one of those, he said, was streamlined, uh, permitting so that, you know, you can get a building permit, you can do those things. The approval process, um, are sped up and for construction to reduce costs. And we're, we're not experiencing that. We know that you want to do that, I'm sure, but we're not experiencing that. And if we have to go forward with all the street improvements, asphalt season is over. So that means we'll have to wait. Until next spring. There's no way that we'd be able to get it all ready before winter comes for that. In fact, if we are able to go forward, we'll still have increased costs because now winter is close upon us. And so we'll have those extra. Um, usually about, uh, six to eight thousand dollar fees for. Key construction. Winter construction, how it works. Um, and, um, the other thing I would ask is, like your last meeting with the canal company, that you saw that time was of the essence for that developer. Their funding was there, they're ready to move forward, um, that we would like and would ask that you would. See the same for us as a developer, that our funding is there, we're ready to move forward, we want to beat the weather and that. For the Utah code, this is the last one I'm gonna throw in, is Utah code ten dash nine eight three oh six. If a land use regulation does not plainly restrict a land use application, the land authority shall interpret and apply. The land use regulation to favor the land application. And so it's not plain, you're saying just a sidewalk fee. You're saying street improvements completely. There's a few other different, uh, stipulations that are different than those, all in the code. And we would ask that you find it in our favor and put it into action, imply that, that we can just move forward. And keep the core zone the way it looks now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank.
I I would say that the Nyes aren't the only ones in this position. There's another one, the Bunseys.
Um, so just for the council's information, whatever is decided for the Nyes, there's two other applicants whose letters you have in your packet. Who are going to be requesting the exact same thing right behind them. If the council does make a decision. We as staff will take that to mean that's going to be your decision for all three and we'll apply your decision accordingly. Just so we save additional presentations to the council and hopefully can get their processes, processes moving as well. So please keep that in mind when discussing this item.
Uh, as the city. Um. Want to apologize. We, we try to do something good. And I think our general plan is good and what we did and looking at the infill, but. We didn't follow it all the way down into the codes that that actually affects. We, we were looking for that infill. In that area and allowing that type of what you're wanting done. But because it didn't follow every code that is affected. Uh, we got our own way, which in turn really affects you. So, sorry. So, and there are other applicants. Um, with that. If you can just hold for one moment, now I'm going to turn them to have them discuss the codes that are actually, that's, that's why. Eight, eight point A, eight A is the discussion. And before the council makes any motion, I want to come back to you guys if that's possible. Thank you.
Mayor, I can just start out with a. Situation that happened at my house. So after I had built my home, there was a development that came into the north of me. And they had a home right next to me. And so they had curb and gutter, which ended on the property line. And. I had a big pile of water in front of my house for the coming year. And. Then the city had to come in. I didn't even complain about it. I just drove through it, but they came in and extended the curb and gutter in front of my house. To carry that water and then have a grain for it. So. It would just create.
Create more.
This kind of stuff all over.
Marcus, you want to take us through that code?
Um.
On eight A?
Yeah, so there's a lot of potential code changes associated with this. We're starting to put together what exactly those would be. The Nyes' presentation highlighted our biggest concerns, um, pretty nicely. There's some problems with how the codes are laid out specifically for minor subdivisions and the core zone. There's some conflicting things that we're dealing with. Generally, a subdivision in Hyde Park and any other zone, there's a very clear set of rules, which is the lens we were looking through. But as the Nyes have brought up, there's differences when you're dealing with the different zones and different areas, specifically around the infrastructure. We recently outlawed the use of flat curb throughout the city because in the rest of the city, we're seeing a lot of high-backed curbs, developments are putting in stormwater ponds. That's how they're being developed. Um, but in the core zone specifically where we don't have a lot of that infrastructure, one of the things that the DRC had brought up. When recommending that change to take out the flat curb option of the code was that they wanted the city council to look at. Adopting different standards for different parts of town, knowing that we have different infrastructure in those parts of town. Specifically in the core zone, what we would like to ask the city council to consider. And we do need to have some engineering work done on this to make sure it will work. Is we would like to have a new standard of development for the core zone. Currently, all of our road standards are found. I'll pull them up very quickly. Here in our construction standards, road standards, we have nice cross-sections for each type of right-of-way and how the road should be built. Um, as was identified in one of the presentations we heard earlier tonight. We would like to create a new cross-section specific to the core zone. We have a typical ninety-nine-foot cross-section, but this is more of a Wolfpack Way-style road. And frankly, we don't anticipate those being built in the city for a long, long time in the core zone. Someday maybe, but not for thirty, fifty-plus years. Um, we hesitate to recommend that the city abandon the right-of-way, but what we'd like to do is propose a new cross-section that essentially would be a limited asphalt, um. Section. We're not quite sure how much footage right now, but kind of keeping it the way it is. Um, when development will come through, there would be some, maybe some type of flat curb just to preserve the edge of the asphalt, maybe not. We're still figuring out which option is going to be best. But then instead of a curb and a park strip. Having the developers go through and redo the grassy swales, um, in the core part of town as the stormwater conveyance method. So that we're not dumping water onto adjacent properties. Um, and so that's really what we're asking for is if the city council would be supportive of the staff working with. Sunrise Engineering to do an analysis and put together a potential cross-section or cross-sections to have a different type of infrastructure in the core zone versus the rest of the city.
I think, I think that's just common sense, right?
Okay. And you, you said something that. You, you said something that. I struggled with is outlawing the flat. Because that's exactly what I said that we should have had on second east when we re asphalt. Otherwise the asphalt along the edges degrade and maybe it's not a.
Right, well. The caveat was in that current ordinance, it could be applied anywhere in town. And so the development that was requesting it was up in the hills and we were saying, if you put in a flat curb. We're gonna have a stormwater problem. And this particular developer said, that's not my problem, your code says I can. And so the recommendation from the DRC was to eliminate that. But to start looking at new cross sections where flat curb would be appropriate.
Outlawed it.
Well, currently it is.
Serves a purpose to preserve the integrity of roads when we're just doing asphalt in the core part of town, we should be putting. Concrete along the edge.
Right. And so the compromise the DRC came up with for the NIs is even though it's outlawed, it makes sense that maybe we could do a flat curb. But that still means they have to do additional asphalt sidewalk where it doesn't exist. And so this is where the incongruency happens is. It doesn't make a lot of sense as we saw on this map. If we're, if we're forcing the developers. To update their property to current standard, there's only handful of lots where the city's going to have the development pay for it. And then the city gets to go back and fill in those gaps, which as we know costs.
Those aren't.
A lot of money.
Those are blocks.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, we're filling in blocks, not gaps. And so that's the request of the city staff. The opinion that we have on the NIs request is that it's. It's a difficult one because code wise, there are a lot of inconsistencies. But as they mentioned in the land use law of Utah, there's this common phrase, we say the tie goes to the runner. Which essentially means if there's any inconsistencies in the code, we rule in favor of the land use applicant. And so as a city staff. We would be in favor with what they're proposing with a couple of caveats such as having them redo the drainage swale in front of the home, making sure that's preserved. And then, um. Figuring out the situation of the curbing, but we don't really see any problem with excusing. The subdivisions happening in the core part of town from a large portion of these improvements. If we are adopting a new standard and that's the direction the city's heading.
So I'm, want to ask you, um. I, I agree with that and recognizes that we have two more in the chamber. After that. Do we, and I hate, I. I don't think the other eight or ten people are just waiting to see what these three are gonna do. But is there a way that we just say. Address these three afterwards, the city, and we can address this in another city council meeting. That we put a moratorium until we get more clarity on our codes on. On that development until we can make them to be more in compliant. I, I hate the term of moratorium on anything.
Yeah, enacting a temporary land use regulation, which is what it's called in state code typically requires some sort of emergent need of the city. When I talked to the city attorney about, we had the idea of doing a moratorium on a different part of town. With where we're also getting a lot of applications and we weren't super excited about the code a while ago. And the response I got was essentially, you need to be careful, careful about when you use it. It wasn't, uh. Yeah, this sounds fantastic or no, don't do that. It was a. Before you actually do it, come talk to me and we'll figure out if it's something that's worth doing. So if the city council would like to seriously pursue a temporary land use regulation. And put a stop to new applications while we figure this out, I'm more than happy to have that discussion with the city attorney.
I think we have the benefit. After these three and they're up against that same issue of winters coming. And so that kind of gives us. Six months, which is all you can do a moratorium for anyway. So it gives us a six months during the winter to. Figure out the code and, uh, to bring it up into something that we want. So that takes planning commission. And then bringing it on to city council, but I think it's very important that we look at that, but there's, like we said, there's. Three lots there that are. That we got in our way and got in their way. We, we know what we wanted, but.
We never know how it doesn't work out until it doesn't work. And I, I would be in favor of the road standard and the flat curb and. The city staff suggestions, I do feel like. Looking at the core zone and coming up with a minor subdivision standard for just specifically the core zone might be a. Just off the top of my head, might be a good way to approach it because we have potential for this happening in other spots. And if it's specific just for this zone, if you're doing a minor subdivision in this zone, it looks like X, Y, Z. I think would be a, an efficient way to approach it.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so.
Sir, can you come up and you. Take it, you're one of the other two?
Todd Worthy, I'm on the Bunsey, that letter. Um, one thing that was brought up when I split my own property twelve years ago. Um, that you're gonna want to look at with the public works is with the flat curb. Um, if you do that, then you've, with your swells, what are you doing with the driveways? Um, two weeks ago, I came to the meeting on Wednesday morning. Was it two weeks ago, three weeks ago? I don't remember. Anyway, Scott with Sunrise mentioned the same thing of, well, if you have that swell, now you have a driveway. And are we now going to be requiring to put a conduit or a, not conduit, but. Underneath these driveways, right? Um, the reason that they did away with that before twelve years ago. Is that the public works were concerned that anytime that they are trying to plow, they're hitting these driveways. Along with that. And so they're trying to plow to this flat curb and not go into people's property. But then you've got driveways that are along with that, that now have a rise in them and they're destroying their plows. So that's one thing that you're gonna want to discuss with public works is all of that. And that's, again, that's why twelve years ago, they did away with that. Um, and decided that no, like if people are doing driveways, if they're concrete and if they're asphalt and. Then they stay with the camber of the road down into that swell, they drain with the property. So that it is able to shed the water and do what it does and, and not have ice buildups and things like that too. So. Something to think about.
Thank you.
Well, and even with the flat curb, the city would still be saying, we're gonna go in and install flat curb. In the rest of this where it's missing. So there's, there's still some engineering analysis and discussion with public works to come up with an official cross section recommendation. But these are all things that we've been, um, talking about for quite some time now, so.
There's, I don't recall anything in our general plan that addresses. This specifically in the. In the, this core zone of, other than maintaining the old city feel and look, but beyond that. In, infill and modern income housing and how can we best utilize functionality of our infrastructure that's already there, this. This is, doesn't save that street, but that's what it's talking about. I even wonder, you know, thinking about this. Is there a plan to put sidewalks on both sides of every street in town? Well, when do they draw on the lottery up in Idaho? Okay, so, so.
No, there, there is not currently a plan to install sidewalks on both sides of the street.
So the plan is on the north side and the west side, is that correct? So that when the winter, we get, we get the early morning sun is on the sidewalks as soon as possible and same thing.
That was the plan. I don't currently have anything written down or in our records that say that that still is.
Cause some streets kind of look like that and other streets like, well, it's just because they build a house after the code went in and now we have sidewalks on.
Yeah, and, and I want to add something else. And one of the things that was brought up was there's an option for a sidewalk fee in lieu. In the core zone and I still would be careful with that. Our city, we used to do that very broadly in the city. We offered a fee in lieu of option for sidewalks, but our attorney recommended that we stop doing that. Um, because the city has, if you're collecting the fee, you're essentially making a promise to. The applicant that the city's gonna come in and fill in those gaps and we're gonna use your fee in lieu of to do that. Now, the city was using that fee to fill in gaps in the city, but there wasn't a consistent plan of where it should be used. So that's why we stopped doing it. We don't have any more reserve in that fund. It was all spent and we, before we could collect anymore, we said, no, we're done. But the same would apply if we resume that practice of the fee in lieu of. We're making a promise to these applicants that, yeah, the city's gonna come in in a certain amount of years and we're gonna fill in those gaps along your. Property.
Yeah, the other problem too is if they say, oh, well, we'll put our sidewalk in, well, where do we tell them where to put it?
Right, there's, again, there's no. There's a handful of properties in town. There's one that I always see driving up Center Street. Where there was a public works director that said, this is where it's gonna be. And then the public works director changed and then it was, this is where it's gonna be and. So it's been a problem for a while. It's, we've been trying to address it with a general plan update. We got very wrapped up in adding new codes. And trying to revamp the application processes, which is what we're doing now. We haven't gotten all the way down to the bottom of the chain reaction yet, which is what you pointed out earlier.
One thing I'll just bring up with the Bunsey, sorry Todd, but. I mean, we have this new school going in there and we want some sidewalks for our kids to walk home on because they have to walk. So. How can we address that? Like there's certain areas we probably do want sidewalk, but I don't know.
About two is how do we spell that out in the zone that sidewalks are. Cause some, if we require that, we'll have to require sidewalk to be put in with some development if we want to protect sidewalks to the school.
Right, but if you look at the, the Bunsey, which one's your corner? Is it, is it? This one?
It just so happens, I think these three are on the south side of streets. So there was never going, there's never, there's. There's no plan to ever put a sidewalk in front of these three that are under consideration, so.
Right, that's your problem is.
Who needs a sidewalk?
If this one got put in and maybe that one got put in in a year and that one got put in in a year, there's still this massive gap. That the city now gets to put in, which we can do, we budget some every year to fill. But that means we have to go find money to do that, which we, again, we can do, it just takes time. So the question comes back to what is the city council's goal? What does the general plan say about the area?
So to address Gerald's concern and it's a great concern, if you recall, Dave kind of came up with. Where are our sidewalks? And he showed us this map and that has driven us to. That's why I want to have the school provide us their transportation plan. And a lot of kids are gonna be walking there. And now there's no sidewalk on either sides of the street on the, on Third North. And down by where the school is and they're creating a problem that really highlights our problem. So we're wanting them to participate and help us with that. So. I think, I think a sidewalk on the north and the west side is, is a good plan. The plan long ago. Caused some consternation, um. People, everyone that was doing infill like this would have to contribute to a sidewalk fund. And then that sidewalk was either put on the west or the north or somewhere else in the city and that somewhere else in the city. Really drew a consternation and it's, they had a sunset on the years and now the laws have changed a lot and it's just. It's not worth. Getting wrapped up in all of that because now if, if you're doing it, it has to be used on their block. And where are you gonna start without having the other four houses? So. It's, it's a challenge.
So again, the request that we as city staff have is getting. A nod from the council on if you would like us to spend some time working up. Potential cross sections and doing some engineering and public works analysis to try and identify some recommended changes to the cross section. Or the core zone.
Completely in agreement. With doing that. But to address seven B now.
Right, so acknowledging that's direction the city is, is heading and it's most likely going to be much like what it is today. What is the city council's appetite for continuing?
For the three that are there.
Right, so currently the what city staff has told them is you're doing it because that's what the ordinance says. Their point of view is the ordinance is confusing, so you should let us not have to do that. And the city staff's opinion is if we're moving in a direction that changes the cross section. Or not, or not changes the cross section, so it stays the way it is, then we would. Probably agree with the applicants that, that's something that we could probably excuse them from.
And I would bring up the point that, uh, this NIs said about. State code says that if there's any disconnects. Tie goes to the runner.
Right, and we're not just saying. You don't have to do it, but they did bring up, there's the piece of code that says that the developer can request. Amendments to their plans that are not directly incongruent or directly in line with. City council has the leeway to approve it for, um, minor subdivisions, which is what they are.
Um, code thirteen dot seventy dot one hundred, exception to ordinance. Says that we can do so after recommendations of the DRC and planning commission. Can we, that? I mean, I'm just. This is. This is under our subdivision ordinance. Exception to ordinance. Thirteen dot seventy dot one hundred, where unusual topographic or other exceptional conditions exist. The city council may vary the requirements of this ordinance after receiving the recommendations of the DRC and planning commission. Provided that such variations will not substantially impair the intent of the ordinance. And that's what my question earlier is if the planning commission, I guess number one, does that apply to what we're doing? And if so, that was kind of my question earlier, has the planning commission looked?
Good, this feeds back into the incongruency of it because the minor subdivision code has a way that the city council alone can make exemptions. But the subdivision ordinance as a whole says you gotta go through the whole process. So if we're looking at the minor sub. The city council can say, yeah, that sounds good. But if we're calling, if we're going with the regular subdivision rules. Then, I mean, you have the DRC's endorsement, they've talked about it and said this makes sense, but we're bound by the code as we understood it. But all the DRC said in the meeting with them, that it made sense to have that be changed. If that's the direction the city council wants to go.
This is, this is a minor subdivision in my mind.
All three of these applications are minor. Only minor subdivisions are allowed in the core zone.
Okay, right. So because of the minor subdivision, it takes that thirteen. Dot forty. Dot forty out and we'd be looking more in line with. The thirteen dot twenty, that's the definitions and, and thirteen one thirty oh twenty is infill. Yeah, there, there just needs to be some work. I agree with Tiffany that there ought to be a, a separate standalone. Minor subdivision codes for the residential core. And so I'm ready just to, to move that we. Allow them to proceed. Um, in accordance with the intent of our residential core and not require sidewalk or gutter. Like I'd say.
Or additional asphalt.
Or additional asphalt even, I mean, just. Let's subdivide and build some smaller homes on these smaller lots in the core town. And not have it look any goofier than some streets look.
And would the council be supportive of the city staff working with each of the applicants to improve their swales? And have their storm drainage shift there where it's supposed to be?
I think that's important.
We're only talking about the one, aren't we?
Well, we're, the city council's voting on one, but the other two are gonna be right behind them saying the city council said.
Saying it very definite, I, I kind of like the idea of. Kind of working with each of them to do what makes sense.
So.
To make it the best outcome possible.
Dave, would that motion, would you reopen?
But then it will be different. Are you worried? Cause it might be different for us each.
That leaves us in a pickle as city staff because we would really like clear direction because then we can treat everyone the same.
If that, if that's the case, if that's what you want, Dave's good.
So we had a, a motion being formed. I don't know if you want to finish.
Yeah, once again, so I'll move that we allow the city staff to work with the NIs subdivision and. Exactly what he didn't want.
Well, let's.
In order in, and not require, uh, the standards is outlined in our subdivision code, which. Exceptions that they don't need sidewalk, curb, gutter, additional asphalt, that those. Parcels match essentially the parcels to their east and west or north, well, in this case, their east and west. And, yeah, maintain that. And to ma- maintain the.
And to ma- maintain the grassy swales.
To improve or, yeah.
That's clear.
In lieu of curb and gutter. And no sidewalks required.
That's clear enough for me.
So is that clear enough?
We got a thesis on a motion?
Hey, you know.
In that motion?
A man, a few words.
And just for discussion, I would like to, I think we should get on this and, and clean this up and have some clear guidelines that. Outline what's expected in the future. So people don't come with the confusion, but we never know this until. We write ordinance that doesn't work and I appreciate you pointing out how it doesn't work so we can go in and correct it.
Yep.
So I didn't quite hear that, that that would be on the plan.
Motion from Davis in a second. We got a second.
And, and the planning commission will.
And will.
Get this on their agenda to.
So we, we as city staff will start putting together concepts and recommendations for the new cross section. We'll start those at the planning commission and they'll make their way to the city council as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Question. If, if we approve this, we're, we're also saying that they will work with you.
Probably with Mikel.
With those modifications or recommendations that you have as long as you and the staffer. Isn't that what we're saying?
Yeah, you're essentially giving the city staff the ability to work with individual property owners and waive the requirements for infrastructure that don't make sense and don't match with what's existing. Which is what we need.
That's what I said.
Yeah, but why say it short in one sentence when you can say it in a fair?
Cause, cause he's got the experience here. I'm, I'm learning.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Motion carries five zero. I, the only thing I would say is let's. Let's move with expediency.
Yeah.
For. What we've been holding them up. And let's get them moving. There you go.
Thank you for coming.
And let's get, there's, Mikel's got a list of codes that her and I were speaking about today. One of them was developers. And we had this discussion sometime ago about waters or fee in lieu of just changing it to make it say water. They have to provide it. Uh, so she's got a list of codes that.
We're just adding to her list.
Add it to her list, but I'm not sure if it goes in front of one A or one B. They're all important, but. I think their general plan was right. We just, when we were updating and we updated lots of codes, we just didn't get.
We're still chasing down the ripple effects.
Yeah, there's still. That's okay.
New zone for us and.
Right.
We say it's okay until it impacts somebody the way it has. So at least we can move forward and they can move forward. The next item on our city agenda is. Is we need to have a closed session. An executive session. To discuss some pending litigation. All right. Thank you all. So.
So just as a reminder, we have to make a motion to move into closed session, stop the recording, start a new one.
Oh, make a motion that we move into closed session. I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion and a second to move into closed session. And I think you stopped the recording.
You got all in favor.
Oh, and we. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay?
All right.
Action carries.
And for the benefit of the live stream, we will be ending the live stream and ending the. Open portion of this meeting after the closed session, we will resume the normal city council meeting to adjourn.
Right.
Thank you.
Doors closed. Okay.